Ready to go?
Great, thank you very much. We're going to call to order the November 16th, 2022 board meeting and remind everyone to please mute your audio when you're not speaking, as well as state your name prior to making a motion and a second for any action item. I'll begin by asking each commissioner to please respond with a "here" when I call out their name. Commissioner Doan?
Here.
Commissioner Duggan?
Finally here, yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
And Commissioner Lysick?
Here.
Great, thank you, everybody. We'll begin this evening by report from our chief executive officer and management staff.
All right, well, thank you, President Sanders. Good evening, commissioners. So I want to start off by acknowledging, I'm going to say, by, I'm going to state it this way, our excellent financial staff who received a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. The Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada has awarded a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting to TVWD for its annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2021. The report has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, which includes demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate its financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to read the report. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. So hats off to our financial team. I, I, I think, I'll let Paul speak when he gets to his portion here, but I think this is now multiple years in a war, in a row of getting this award. So well done to the entire finance team. Oops, sorry, jumped too quick. There we go. All right, I attended the AMWA, which is the Association of Metropolitan Water Agencies' executive management conference a couple of weeks ago. And it was their executive management conference in Savannah, Georgia. One, it's a great opportunity for me to connect with peers nationwide on a bunch of topics. Some of those are listed here: cultural shifts, environmental justice, data-driven transparency, and affordability. I also participated on a cybersecurity panel. I have to thank Tim Bolin, our IT director, for prepping me for that. And, but it, all in all, the entire conference was very, very good. It is one that some of the commissioners in the future may want to consider attending. And just because it's, it's information really at a very high level. It doesn't get into the technical reports that you get in at, at other conferences. I will say the issue of affordability, it is a national issue. It, it was a main point during the conference of the challenges that many entities are having across the country, and many are trying to figure out how to deal with it. I have to say, I, I really do feel like we are on a bit of a cutting edge with what we're doing with the rate advisory committee and bringing in Dr. Teodora to help guide us. So I think we are leading on this, potentially this front. So we'll, we'll see what the results bring us. I anticipate probably speaking about what we're doing maybe at next year's conference. So we'll see how that goes. The other one I wanted to point out, it was, I, I looked it up. In Des Moines, Iowa, there is now a bottled water company, and I couldn't tell you the name of the company, but they are building these facilities on, like, street corners that consumers can go put a lot of money in to fill a container for water. And they are targeting neighborhoods that are on the lower end of the economic scale and really playing off the, the fears of the community. And they're, what's really sad about this is that people are spending literally a thousand times more to get water from this machine than what they, if they just got it from their tap. So this became a topic of conversation at the conference. And I, I have not heard of these or seen these on the West Coast yet. These are primarily in the Midwest at this point. Evidently bottled water companies are thinking this is a good way to make money. I'll save my commentary on that. I just find that just disappointing. I'll leave it at that. So, but if, if we do start seeing this kind of thing, I would, anywhere here in the West, then we may want to consider some actions that we'd want to do to combat it. And I have a few ideas in mind. So, uh, move on unless there's questions there. As Commissioner Don already mentioned, we held our first talking water today in Spanish, talking about cold weather preparedness. This is a topic we've done in English a couple of different times now, and it's one of the most popular topics that we do. So today, we, we chose to do it in Spanish. Really big thanks to our communication team and all the staff that was involved in presenting this. So I, I just, I think it's great that we are reaching out to a more diverse group of our customers. And then unless there's any questions for me, I'm going to be turning this over to our chief financial officer, Paul Matthews, and he's going to do the safety minute and department report this evening.
Thank you, Tom. So I want to talk about tips for driving safe, safely during the holiday season. We're about to kick off the holiday season. And just to put into perspective that vehicle, motor vehicle crashes are the leading cause of death for people that are age one to 54, and about 36,100 people were killed in crashes in 2019. Still early estimates, but for 2020, that number has increased by about 7% despite the fact that people are driving less. So this is a good time as we enter the holiday season to, to look at what we can do to be a little safer. I've got four suggestions here for all drivers, our little folks and our teens and some of our more mature folks as we go through. First of all, let's talk about all drivers. Couple of things we should do. First, do not drive while impaired. That's obvious. We've been talking about this for a long time. But in 2019, alcohol impaired driving contributed more than 10,100 deaths, crash deaths. And, you know, impairment can be from alcohol, can be by illegal drugs. That can be by prescription drugs, so be very careful. If you need to, if you are impaired, find somebody else to drive for you. Does need driver, use a taxi, some other service. Avoid distractions while driving. And just as an example, if you are taking a text, cellphone or text call, first of all, it's illegal. But if you are to text and you take your eyes off of, to send text message, takes about five seconds to do that at 55 miles per hour, somebody did the math for us. That's like driving the length of a football field with your eyes closed. It's not something you would do. You wouldn't close your eyes and drive the length of football field, but some people will look down on a text message, take that five seconds, 55 miles an hour. So distracted driving, obviously not a good idea. And then check the weather conditions before you leave. The weather can be uncertain. Have a good idea of what those weather conditions are and plan your, your, plan your trip accordingly. And always use your seatbelt and require all the passengers to use their seatbelts as well. It's always a good idea for all drivers to do that. Moving on to children, buckle the children into age and size appropriate car seats, booster seats and seatbelts, age appropriate and size appropriate for those folks. Use car seats and booster seats correctly. There are right ways to put them in, wrong ways to put them in. They are, can be complicated. There's a lot of resources online, but make sure that your kids are secured safely. This is something I didn't know, but the bulky puffy coats, they shouldn't be put on underneath the car seat. It restricts the ability to tighten them properly. So you want to make sure that you secure the child without the bulky clothes on and then put something on them to keep them warm. Children under 13 should ride in the back seats. And last item is always set a good example. Our kids learn from us. Always wear your seatbelt and let them know why you're doing, why you're doing so. For our teen drivers, first, talk to them. Got a couple teens, sometimes they're difficult to talk to, but discuss the rules of the road and safety with your team. Let them know why it is that we follow these rules. Know your state's laws regarding graduated driver licensing systems. I had no idea that this was a national effort. I had no idea that there was a TLA for it, GDL, three-letter abbreviation for this thing, but there is actually out there. And in Oregon, of course, there's a six-month period and a year period before they can do certain things. Know what that is and discuss it with your kids. Require your teens to buckle up, and again, set a good example. Always use your seatbelt so they'll follow suit. For some of our older drivers, it's a good idea for them, especially if they are taking a lot of medications. We age, we, we end up with more regular pharmaceuticals in our systems. Talk to your doctor, your pharmacist to review the, the medicines that you take to make sure they're not going to impair your driving. And have an eye exam annually and wear the prescribed corrective lenses so that you can keep your vision going. Plan your, oh, there's a typo. Plan your route before you drive. Avoid left-hand turns that don't have turn signals. You know, get to the point where your plan, where you're able to drive safely. Find safe, safe routes with well-lit streets, intersections, left turn signals, and easy parking. Many people can fall as they get out of the vehicle, so find parking that's appropriate and easy to use. With that, I hope everybody has a safe and joyful holiday season. And what I'm not sure of is, and now last President Sanders, do I just go into the department report or do I, for direction from you?
How about this for direction? You can go right into the department report.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So this is a little anticlimactic because I wanted to talk today about what we're doing with the rate advisory committee, but we had a lot of folks attend the meeting, and that was great. A lot of our commissioners were there. So I'll go through this pretty quickly. I think there's a couple of things, and we talked about this a little bit earlier, a couple of things that are, are, we're seeing develop that are, that are really pretty good. First, the group that we have, citizens donating their time, coming together, help the, the district, seem really committed to the process. There's a lot of information. They're taking it patiently. We've got to give them information, respect their intellect by giving them the information they need to provide excellent recommendations to the board. That takes patience on their part, and we're seeing that. So it, it seems like we've got a great group assembled. I want to talk a little bit about what the prior act did. So this isn't the first time we've, we've done this. And of course, the last time, Commissioner Doan and Commissioner Burke were on, were the board liaisons to the rate advisory committee. So we have questions, we can query Commissioner Doan on this later in the presentation here. But we asked that rate advisory committee to provide recommendations around affordability. There were some other things that we asked them to talk about, and, and they gave us the following recommendations. First, monthly billing. And so we are working on monthly billing. In fact, we secured a new billing system. We're in the process of finishing stabilization of that new billing system so we can move to monthly billing. Levelized billing, something like what PGE Northwest Natural Gas has, where customers can have a levelized bill over time. There was concern about the impact that might have on conservation, but there was also a desire to have that as an option for customers because it does help people meet their budgetary requirements. Temporary emergency assistance, which we have, in fact, was very helpful that we had our current customer emergency assistance program and our customer emergency assistance fund as we hit COVID back in 2016, 17. We didn't think we were going to have a health emergency or a public health emergency, but we did. And that program was in place, and that was, that was excellent. Penalty forgiveness and low income rate, those are two other things. And this current RAC is looking at the low income rate as we, as we speak. So we've had two RAC meetings. The first was in September, and the last one was just last night. So we're going to kind of hit the highlights from the two RAC meetings, give you sort of layout of, of what they are. So here's the overall schedule for the RAC meeting. So October 18th, we had the kickoff meeting last night. We had the second meeting. We plan to have a third meeting on December 13th. The, the agenda's changed a little bit. We want that third meeting to actually be, again, about customer assistance. And this will be an opportunity for the committee members to start providing their sense, answering their questions, and more of a conversation with them and less of a presentation by the consultants that we saw last night. And then we'll talk about, in the subsequent meetings, we'll talk about rate design, a rate structure, fix variable cost. So it's a structured program that we have going out through March with hope to bring recommendations to the board after that has concluded. At the last, at the first RAC meeting, we presented what the issue is that our customers are facing and why this is something that the board has directed us to do. And, and it really comes down to continuing the investment in the water supply program. We know that that is going to continue to increase our cost, and we know that that is going to increase the number of customers that find it difficult to pay their water and sewer bills. So we're trying to be proactive and get these systems in place before we have too much, too many more customers that find the affordability to be a huge challenge for them. We also had the consultant talk about what we're seeing nationally, and Tom talked about this. You know, affordability is a national concern. It's, it's, you can't go to a conference and not talk about affordability. And really, that started to pivot about, I'd say, probably 2005 to 2010. The conversation stopped being a little bit less about conservation, a little bit more about affordability. And now it's, affordability is the, is the prime topic. And this graph shows, shows kind of why, what's going on here. The top line that you see there, and I'm going to see if I can use the laser pointer here online. This top line that you see up here is the growth in the cost of water nationwide. This is not in, in Portland, this is not in TVW. This is a nationwide statistic. Since 1999, it's been increasing at, at a pretty substantial rate, while at the same time, building people to pay has been increasing at a slow rate. This increasing deviation is what's causing us to see more and more challenges and a greater emphasis on finding affordability programs for, for customers. And then at that first RAC meeting, the consultants talked about some of the options to get the committee to start thinking in terms of what, what, what technologies or what approaches we can have put in place to help customers that are experiencing that difficulty with their bill. And that brings me to the second RAC meeting. And as I believe CEO Hickman talked about, we brought in Mini Teodoro, who, Dr. Teodoro is a associate professor at University of Wisconsin, and he's a national expert on these matters. He's actually in the political science department, but he focuses on these kinds of issues. So he talked to the group about what affordability is, some of the metrics that we use to measure them. We're going to highlight some of the things that he presented here last night. The first is what he calls his AR20 approach, which is essentially an affordability ratio. It's, looks at the ability of customers at the 20th percentile of income to afford water. Starts with their household income, subtracts out their non-water essential expenses, things like housing, food, healthcare. And what's left is a somewhat of a measure of disposable income. And we look at the cost of water to the household based on the number of participants in the household. We look at the cost of water as a percentage of that residual or disposable income. And the other metric that he used is how many hours, if you were paid the minimum wage, how many hours would you need to work in order to cover the cost of your basic water and sewer service? So we calculate, again, the bill in the, in the numerator and then the local minimum wage, which in Oregon, in this particular case is $14.25 divided by the two, and it gives us the number of hours. So I want to go through just an example here of where we are at TVWD. For a three-person household, and he assumes in his analysis that a three-person household requires 50 gallons per capita per day, so that's 50 gallons per person. So times three people, 150 gallons for that household per day. Over a month's time, comes up to 600 cubic feet, about 600 cubic feet of water, which is the, the measurement that we use, that our water meters use to bill customers. So the cost of that water for TVWD is $60.86 for clean water services and additional $55.71. You add those two things together, and that gives you your numerator. Now we start working on the denominator. The, you looked at the monthly income for the 20th percentile customer in our service area. So he was able to look in our service area using American Community Survey data and find out what that is. So the 20th percentile income for a household is $3,920 per month, which, by the way, is actually quite high, about $20,000 per year higher than the national 20th percentile income. Estimated the other essential expenses, which are a little bit higher in, in this part of Portland because housing costs are higher here, right? And the difference is that discretionary or disposable income subtracted the, the estimated of other essential expenses from the 20th percentile income, and that gives you the, the number there on line E. He took that numerator and divided it by that denominator we just calculated. And for TVWD alone, just for the water bill, it takes about 4.2% of the discretionary income, as defined by his methodology, to pay for the water bill. And if you add the water and sewer together, it's about 8% for a three-person household. For a four-person household goes up because there's an extra 50 gallons per capita per day in that calculation. There are four people rather than three. So this was the methodology. He gave it a much more in-depth treatment to the rate advisory committee. Excuse me, what about that? He gave much more, a much more thorough treatment and essentially imparted to them the ability to understand how these things pull together. One thing's important is that these are kind of interesting metrics, but without context, what do they mean? Is 4.2% good or bad? Is 8% good or bad? And the takeaway that I think we can come for TVWD is that we're actually in a fairly good situation. In a sense, we have customers that are finding it very difficult to afford their bill, but we don't have as many customers as other utilities have. So we have a smaller problem to solve than most utilities, and we have a larger customer base to help us solve that problem. So in a sense, it's, we're in, in, in good shape. Meaning, we don't have as many customers in trouble, but we have more customers that can help support solving that problem. And I think that's the broader takeaway that we had. He did the same analysis, looking at, I'm sorry, I need to click ahead. He, I think I've lost my... Okay, sorry about that. We should be seeing slide 29, if I'm not mistaken. So he then projected the affordability for a three-person household and for a four-person household because we're not standing still. So a couple of things are going on. First, our costs are increasing. And we gave him a projection of what our rate increases are going to be. Of course, those are speculative, but we needed to give him some numbers to work with. So we gave him that. The other thing he had to do is then forecast what's happening to, what's happening to folks' income and those other expenses. So he used his methodology to project those things out into the future, and that's what gave us these measures. The top line is the affordability at the 20th percentile. The bottom line is the number of hours at minimum wage that someone would have to work. So he gave us those projections for a three-person household as well as a four-person household. And then he showed this graph to us explicitly to prove to us that we shouldn't look at it. And he spent quite a bit of time explaining, he might have, I think if you were there, you would remember, he talked about shoe sizes and some other things. The fact is, that number, there's a thirst to know. If we're at 5.2% or whatever number we are, where's the rest of the country? And I think President Sanders actually pointed out that this is a distribution that is, you know, problematic for sure. And, and I think that was actually Dr. Teodoro's point, which is, it doesn't necessarily matter where we are versus other folks. The point is, we have to decide at what level we're going to help folks pay their water bill, how much their discretionary or disposable income that we think as a community that we value should, should be available to them, and, and then move on from there. So he did that both for the AR20 analysis, and he also did it for the, this was for, I'm sorry, 2020 and then 20, 2019 and 2021. He skipped 2020 because COVID has made all these numbers just a little bit crazy. One of the things I think a lot of people found interesting, if you look at this distribution, is these numbers way out here, both in 2019 as well as in 2021, have less to do with the affordability of water than it has to do with just poverty that certain communities in, in, in the country have. And of course, you know, that isn't really our focus with the rate advisory committee. Our focus with them is how to serve the customers within TVWD. But it is interesting just to see that there was some social commentary on, on this fact. And here are the hours at minimum wage, the average 10.1, and we're, we're lower than that. And then in 2021, 9.7. And that's because there had been an increase in minimum wages around the country. We're actually seeing the minimum wage go up. So that was an interesting... Then we turn it over to our other consultant, Mr. Mum, who is serving throughout the entire project. We brought in Dr. Teodoro as a guest speaker for this, and, and Jason Mum will be leading us through the rest of the study. And he, he laid this out, is there are four questions that we need to, to ask. And first is, how do we define the need for a household? What metric do we want to use to manage how much assistance we might give them? How do we qualify customers? What is it that we use to qualify customers? And what are estimated participation rate might be? You might remember when we talked about COVID, we worked really, really hard and we got up to 27% of our eligible customers participating. By the way, the definition of eligibility was different under COVID than what we're going to be looking at. But nevertheless, we were really, really happy because we were told to get over 20%, you're doing really well. And then we compare that, you take the needs times the number of people who are qualified, times the participation rate, and that can give you how much dollars you're going to be spending on this, and that would then compare it to our funding. And so just food for thought, he also presented, again, how we compare to other neighboring utilities. And this is using the hours worked at minimum wage at TVWD, 4.8 hours. And you can see throughout the metropolitan area what other customers had. And then he did a thought experiment. Essentially said, well, let's say that the RAC decided to recommend, let's keep it at 4.8, or maybe the RAC decided, let's see if we can't reduce that to four. Let's have an assistance program that would essentially, as we go through time, keep it at 4.8 hours. So we provide assistance to that, to keep it at that level for those people who qualify. Or rather, we'd actually bring it down by a tenth an hour. These are arbitrary numbers. He just wanted to lay out the methodology and do this as an example. So he walked through the, the amount of assistance that people would need. So in 2023, for example, if we wanted to keep it at 4.8, they, those folks would need a subsidy of $3.19. If we wanted to reduce it down to 4-0, then the subsidy would be about $16. And we showed that over time to make the, the RAC understand, understand those elements. And so we had a great discussion about that as well. The RAC has a lot going on. We're going to be continuing to present information... The rack has a lot going on. We're going to be continuing to present information to them. I didn't want to spend too much time talking about this, and I really wanted to pause because we had commissioners there. I wanted to see folks that were there, including other members, the management staff were there, and just pause and see if if for those that attended had other thoughts they wanted to add. So I guess Commissioner or President Sanders, I'd turn it back to you and see if there are others that wanted to can contribute to this discussion tonight.
Thank you, Paul. Well, we had Commissioner Don and Commissioner Duggan had also attended with me last night. I don't have anything to add. Paul, you did a wonderful job of summarizing last night's events. We'll see if Commissioner Don or Commissioner Duggan have anything they'd like to include.
This is Jim Don. I was really encouraged by the level of participation of the members of the RAC. It's very different than it was in two thousand seventeen, and I'm encouraged by the fact that these people are really engaged. And more power to them. I hope they help us come up with decent solutions.
Yes, Commissioner Duggan, I'd like to echo those sentiments about last night. The questions were really, really well thought through and the answers were were very enlightening to the just the overall reaction to the presentation and the data points that we got to see. Translating that into a rate structure to deal with some of the affordability challenges, that that's going to be where where the real work is. But I was really left encouraged last night and I'm looking forward to the next next meeting next month.
Paul, do you know if the slides from last night are posted on the TVWD website or available? I know Commissioner Duggan had asked for a set.
I noticed that there were some, yeah, some were sent to us yesterday afternoon, right before the meeting. I just noticed that in my email. But I don't know if we got the complete set.
I would like to kick it to Andrea because she is managing that part of the communication. So Andrea Watson, do you have information when that will be posted or?
The slides themselves have been coming with the summary notes from the consultants. If anyone does have these ones they emailed and you want to shoot it my way, I could put it up in the interim. And the recording is available and I put the link in the chat.
Great, thank you, Andrea.
And President Sanders, I'm wondering if Tom had, he was also in attendance, if he had anything he wanted to add.
I I don't, other than I just, I like others, I was really impressed. I'm very pleased with the committee, their engagement on this. I've gone through a couple of rated advisory committees before and and I, the engagement that we're getting is fantastic on this. So and and I thought the presentations last night were just really, really well done. So I'll leave it at that.
Well, that concludes my department report.
All right, thank you, Paul. I know that we all enjoyed last night a great deal, so. All right, moving on to our agenda, the next item is our reports of meetings attended, and our commissioners will now report on recent meetings attended, and we'll begin with Commissioner Don. Commissioner Don, sir.
Ah, the fallacies of being in the first in alphabetical order. Okay, there's tonight's meeting. There was the Talking Water today in Spanish, which was just fantastic. The Rate Advisory Committee last night. There was a supply committee on November eighth. I took an advanced technology course on water desolization on the third of November and then met with our representative on the October twenty-seventh. That's it. Unless I forgot something.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Don. Commissioner Duggan.
On the twenty-first of October, I attended a luncheon put on by the City of Beaverton's mayor's office that they called the Quarterly Leader Lunch. It had a quite good attendance and the focus of the first one, and I assume there'll be more every three or four months, that the focus of the first one here was on how to cooperate with the Park District and what the Park District's initiatives are going forward now that we're coming out of the pandemic. On the eighth of November, I attended the Agenda Planning Meeting with CEO and President. On the ninth, I attended the Finance Committee Meeting where we got updates on billing, enterprise resource planning, automated billing initiatives. Those things were updated for us. Last night I attended the RAC and then tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Duggan. Commissioner Fisher.
Well, now that the election's over, my time has gotten back to me. It's so nice to be able to see you all tonight. I attended tonight's meeting, of course, and then over the weekend I had sort of an impromptu meeting with a former Metro Councillor on the state of some of the issues we've been discussing tonight. He was, he's always very, very nice to hear and get advice from. And then coming up, the meetings this week, and then this weekend I am attending the Twalton River Keepers Green Heron Gala. I don't know if TVWD folks have typically ever attended this, but I felt like, you know, a conservation partner in the district and the event is going to be in our district. I felt we should make an appearance and so I will, I will be there unless anybody else is going to be there too.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. Commissioner Lysick.
Good evening. On October twenty-fifth, I attended, or I took some SDAO web training for best practices for board member duties and responsibilities, part of one of the last pieces of onboarding for me. And then on the ninth, the Finance Committee Meeting that Commissioner Duggan already spoke to. On November tenth, I had a meeting with Paul Matthews where we wrapped up my, some questions that I had from onboarding. On the sixteenth, so earlier today, I attended a meeting with Judy Clark to cover the CEO evaluation discussion and then this evening's meeting in the the executive session that'll follow.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Lysick. And for myself, before we start, I'll just say I really look forward to seeing everybody tomorrow night. This will be, I think, our first time that as a board, we will all be face to face in the same location. And I look forward to that. That's going to be really awesome. Now for my meetings attended, on the twenty-fifth, I met with our CEO, Tom Hickman, to talk again about legislative updates as we continue to prepare for the upcoming session. On the third of on the on the third of November, I met with the audit team from Moss Adams just as a standard operating procedure to have a discussion with the board president with regards to any irregularities that I may be aware of or not aware of. And of course, you know, all I could do is say that, you know, that we do a bang-up job. And it was proven today, right? Tom showed once again that our our finance team is once again winning awards for their work. On the seventh, I met with our lobby group, CFM, and then later with Tom, continuing to talk about what we're doing legislatively. On the eighth, as you heard from Commissioner Duggan, we had our board planning meeting. And then later on the eighth, and I think Commissioner Don, you said, if I might have missed something, we had a water supply meeting, committee meeting on the eighth, and I don't know if I remember hearing you say that you that you had that on your report. And then on the ninth, I was working on or getting ready to invite Beaverton, the City of Beaverton's Council, to perhaps meet with our board for an intergovernmental agreement meeting around Professor Teodoro's work. So I started working on that on the ninth. On the tenth, I met with Commissioner Don with regard to the Water Supply Committee. On the eleventh, I met with Commissioner, with CEO Hickman to talk about the Water Supply Committee. On the twelfth, I talked again to Commissioner Don. On the fourteenth, got the letter ready for the IGA. It's now actually being printed for release tomorrow. And then last night was the Rate Advisory Committee, and this morning I met with Judy Clark as well, and today's monthly meeting. So there's mine taken care of for the month. Now that we have completed that component of our commissioner communications, before we move on to public comment, I'm just going to check to make sure that we have no topics to be raised by our commissioners. Okay, not hearing any. We will now move into the public comment section of this evening's agenda. Public comment time is set aside for persons wishing to address the board on items on the consent agenda and matters not on the agenda. Additional public comment will be invited on agenda items as they are presented. Do we have any persons this evening who would like to comment? Okay, not hearing any. I'm going to move on this evening to our consent agenda, item number one. Our consent agenda items are considered to be routine and may be enacted in one motion without separate discussion. Any board members may request that an item be removed by motion for discussion and separate action. Any items requested to be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion will be considered immediately after the board has approved those items which do not require discussion. This evening, we are going to be asked to approve the October nineteenth, twenty twenty-two regular meeting minutes. Do I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented?
This is Commissioner Don, so moved.
Commissioner Fisher, I second.
Thank you, Commissioner Don and Commissioner Fisher. I'd like to ask our district recorder to please provide the roll call vote.
Commissioner Don?
Yes.
Commissioner Duggan?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Lysick?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes. Wonderful. The motion passes. Thank you, everybody. We'll move on to agenda item number two this evening, which is our informational presentation. We're going to, at this point, receive a outreach plan in response to our twenty twenty-two customer satisfaction survey results and a staff report from Andrea Watson. Andrea?
Well, good evening, Commissioners and President Sanders. Thanks for having me back to talk about this. I I think we're really lucky to have this kind of customer research available to us as well as having, you know, really positive response and and great customers who stepped up to tell us what they think. Before I get into the response, I wanted to share with you this kind of a reverse way that we can use this information. And Chief Operating Officer Pete Boone is here. This is a way that communications serves our customers inside of TVWD. And construction outreach is a big part of what my staff do. And so if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to have Pete talk a little bit about this upcoming project and then we'll share how our services are helping them with the outreach part of this project.
Yeah, thanks, Andrea. So I'll just, I'll give a very brief overview of this topic and and why it's important that we message it to our customers. So coming up, starting in January, our main supply line from the Portland Water Bureau, the Washington County Supply Line, is going to be offline for about three months, and that's related to some Willamette Water Supply System Construction. We will be, or the contractor for the Willamette will be cutting a new connection into that line so we can bring Willamette water in. The the location at work is is on Beaverton Hillsdale Highway near Western Avenue. But the real impact to us and our customers on this operation is it impacts our ability to fluoridate the Portland water. We have other ways to bring that water into our system through some some inter ties with Portland, and we'll continue to use that supply. But we won't be able to add fluoride to it during this construction. We'll still be able to fluoridate our JWC supply, but since those two waters blend out in our system, we wouldn't be be able to consistently apply that fluoride in the way that that we typically do. So we've elected to pause all fluoridation during this time. And we wanted to notify our customers of that, so if they had concerns, they could reach out to their health provider, their dental provider to supplement that on their own. So we've begun that that communication already, even though this work is still a few months away. And Andrea's team's been helping with that through a variety of ways that she can talk about more. But we wanted to be very proactive in that communication and be very transparent, let our customers know exactly what was going on and why.
Thank you, Pete. I really appreciate you teeing this one up. Like I said, this is an internal service we're providing. But we also know that, you know, this is one of those things where we have the ability to be transparent, to elevate the trust our customers have. CEO Hickman mentioned earlier, like kiosk water and use of bottled water, like there's an element to that that can be predatory, but also, you know, indicate a distrust or a dissatisfaction in some way. And that's really the root of what our research and customer satisfaction is trying to get at. So because we know people ingest our product and we've done a lot of work through the years in in giving the customers knowledge about the food-grade fluoride that we use, the dosing that we give, and there's going to be this change over a few months, we really felt that we needed to be pretty robust in our approach. So we always try to use our resources, you know, to the maximum mobility. So we're going to put bill inserts into the bills as a way to reach customers, just as an add-on. We're going to have to mail some of our customers, you know, the timing of this with our bi-monthly billing. We aren't able to put an insert in the entire two-month period, so we will have to take those billing cycles that started before we could put the insert, add those to our mailing list. We'll email our customers. We've started the social media posts. We're not being super aggressive on this, but just to really capture those customers that consume the product but don't necessarily get a bill. Also, we have a whole webpage that's referenced in the materials so that people can get more precise information, get a lot of their frequently asked questions answered and find a way to contact us. We'll be hosting the Talking Water for December around fluoridation, so we're going to open that up, give our community a chance to come in, talk to our subject matter experts about fluoride. We'll do a little media post to make sure there's a little blurb in the paper. And we're investigating right now using the regional water provider lookup tool. We can put an alert on there, but our initial pass at this is we probably won't because that'll get the whole metro area activated. But we'll make sure that our healthcare providers know that they can look up their patients to make sure they're in the service area before they prescribe or apply fluoridation. We've already done a notification by phone first to our partners, which include the Public Health Department as well as our cities, people that we wheel to, you know, because this affects their fluoride application as well. And then following that up with emails, with the links and all the materials that we're sending out or emailing, anything we're putting out to customers, we're making sure our partners see that material as well. We've done some training in our customer service department, so people who are answering the phones. And then we will also And then we will also uh continue to bring this up in meetings so that there's awareness with their field staff and all of our employees that this is happening. We'll also do a notification to our key customers. We're doing a mailing to our dental and orthodontic providers. And then, as I said, we're working with the health department to see how they might be able to assist us with notifications. And then the pediatric, um, we pediatricians, we weren't able to get an actual mailing list for them, but they have an association and they'll push the content out to their members. Um, why I brought this up in relation to the survey is um our results, you know, our results kind of show with the a margin of error that our community is really divided on this issue. We know it's been controversial in the past throughout the region. And so that's why we are wanting to be sure that we're just providing the facts, we're upfront about it. We'll give a talking water so that those customers that feel really strongly about it will have a chance to come, learn more and get their questions answered. Um, but that's just a way that we're kind of using the survey data to know how robust should we take this issue, knowing how our customers feel about it. And I think we mentioned this last time when we talked about the survey, but there is really um not a lot of differentiation by geography. So ten percent of our customers down in the Metzger area are not fluoridated now, and they basically support it at the same level as the customers that are receiving fluoridation. So we think that's important to, so the communication mentions, you know, that this if this change doesn't affect you because you're not receiving it now. Um, let's see, now, back to what our originally scheduled presentation was. Um, there's a lot of material in this survey. There's some of this material that we um think we have a pretty good handle on what the customers were trying to tell us. There's other things we need to explore more. We'll um have a response as we go through time. We'll continue to adapt with this. But for right now, our most immediate response is to increase the number of messages we have around these three core things. Conservation, uh value and, you know, cost, reasonableness of rates, as well as affordability in terms of what kind of services we have to offer right now. So as Paul mentioned in the RAC, um, we have a really engaged committee. I think the recruitment on that was really successful. But we also know that whether you need an affordability program or not, just knowing that we are helping our customers should um help us move the satisfaction in relation to how people feel. So these are the three kind of data areas that our customers were satisfied with. And the ones with the arrows, reliable water source, promoting conservation and reasonable rates are the ones that we're focusing on in our outreach. The other ones in here, safe drinking water, good tasting water. Um, those two are going to be part of our Willamette Water Supply Integration Outreach Plan. Um, we want to keep the knowledge of that high. Things like the fluoride outreach that we mentioned earlier, those are all things that reinforce, hey, your water's safe, and when we, anything changes with the supply, we're gonna let you know that. Informing customers is kind of a more general one, and so we feel it's encompassed with the focusing on the three. But we're also really changing our strategy in terms of the quantity and amount of information that we're gonna put out in social media. We're getting a lot of um impressions and engagement on Nextdoor. Um, it's still our most uh active channel, and so we think by using that and also building our Instagram audience um and then uh expanding our use of LinkedIn, that we can um move the needle on that one as well, but in a more um generic way. So back to some more data that um that we're concerned about, there were two sides of this affordability, expensive value proposition. A very small number of our customers that were dissatisfied, that thirty-eight out of the four hundred responses. Seventy percent of those uh folks said the reason for that was that the water's expensive. So we think reinforcing the value is going to help um help in that rating. And then the flip side of that is amongst our customers who said they were happy, um, we also noted that there is also a um decline in the number of people who said that water rates were reasonable, and that's right at fifty percent. And so we want to get that number back up in these zones that they were previous um to the to the sustained rate increases. And we think that that's gonna happen by talking about the value of water, the cost of water being under two cents, as well as explaining what we are doing with the rates, so that they understand the benefits of keeping our system maintained and building the resilient water supply. And then um these were kind of the high-level recommendations, which was to keep customers informed. So we're doing, as I said, regular um social media. We've revamped our newsletter to be um bilingual. And we also are visiting all of our CPOs every month, every meeting, and we've been doing that now for almost a year. Um, and then we did the pop-ups in the fall, which was really uh shorter events, but really focused on our facilities, parks, places we have reservoirs, and we had really great interactions, and it was a hundred percent our customers. So a lot of times when we go out and we do bigger events, we can be there all day and we can talk to, you know, more people, but a smaller percentage of them are actually TVWD customers. So we're going to do another round of those pop-up events in the winter, which we really haven't done very much inner uh customer outreach in the winter. And we're gonna focus those indoors in coffee shops and tap houses. And so Justin is taking the lead on scheduling those. Um, and we're gonna find uh local uh businesses that are willing to host us for a short amount of time and use table tents instead of signs to let customers know that we will be there to answer their questions. So we're gonna give that a try, see if we can replicate um the kind of success we had out in the parks and out in the community this winter. Um, just to keep our presence, but also just meet people where they are, instead of trying to capture them when they're at other events that they're at for other reasons, like we found at concerts and farmers market, they're there to buy their tomatoes and listen to the music, and they don't really want to spend much time talking to us. The other piece to this is, as I mentioned before, um, the source change. You know, our research firm is saying, you know, look, this is something you really need to be mindful of. Our blue ribbon panel from the Willamette um also really saying it's now time to really dig in and figure out how you're gonna increase the knowledge and awareness that this is coming. We've wrapped a couple of vehicles recently, and those are kind of like driving around billboards, but also we can move those out like on busy intersections and places like that, so people um can notice that um in addition to the other kinds of outreach we've been doing and communication we've been doing to try to let people know about the Willamette water supply. And then also following up, in addition to further plans, we will um repeat this benchmark survey. We want to keep a handle on these trends and uh, you know, after a year, maybe two years, make sure that they're moving back in the direction we want them to go. And then we also have additional research dollars to do some message testing and uh consider some focus groups. We don't know for sure if they'll be focused on uh customer affordability or assistance. We may look at some of the other uh conservation and other issues that people raised. But we will be uh looking at ways to keep these conversations and this research going, so that we can tailor our messaging to be effective with the dollars that we have. With that, I'm going to pause and see if anybody has any questions about outreach um or our response to the survey, at least for this next uh few months. Well, using the Dave Kraska rule, I think I I'm done. I thank you again for your time and for investing in customer outreach and customer um research, so we know how to make it effective.
Thank you, Andrea. And with that, uh, our last slide says it all. Um, we will adjourn this meeting. I just want to remind everybody that we have executive session immediately following. Um, we've got seven, eight-